All right, I will gavel this session of the committee, the whole for the city of Lake Forest Park in session. This is Monday, May twentieth, twenty twenty four at six P M. And I believe that we're start off with public comments. Remember, the I'll read the what the requirements are. The council will not be accepting online public comments. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council on agenda items or any other topic the council might have purviewed or control over. If the comments are of a nature that the council does not have influence or control over, then the deputy mayor or presiding officer may request the speaker suspend their comments. The council may direct staff to follow up on items brought up by the public. Comments are limited to a three minute time limit. So Administrator Hill, do we have any comments?
We have no one signed up in the chambers or present.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so that's it for public comments, then we'll move on to our discussion items. We have two items, the first of which is the levy lid lift basics. I'm going to preface this by saying that many of the council members were elected since the last time the city offered up a proposition to do a levy lid lift. And so this is a session not about a particular lid lift, but just in general, how we are going to, how we would go about doing such a thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Frier Tony. Um, wait for Matt to bring up the presentation. You have it in front of you as well, and it will be posted to the website later. All right. So as the chair said, this is just a levy lid lifts basics. It's just to take you through what it is, the different types, the broad process. And then I've included some links and things in here. You can go in and do more research if you have any questions or want to do a little bit more and then get back to me with any questions. So we'll, we'll go ahead and get started. And I clicked too far. So what is a levy lid lift? I think all of council is aware that on an annual basis, the city is limited to being able to take no more than one percent increase on property tax. What a lid lift does is by a vote of the council to put a levy on the ballot would be to ask the voters to exceed that one percent. And there are several different ways that that can be put together, and we'll get to that later in this presentation. The R C W and the WAC are noted on there. And this is language straight from M R S C, just identifying, you know, the better understanding of the process of the statute under the WAC. And there's a note there about the new levy rate cannot exceed the maximum statutory rate, and we'll get into that a little later in the presentation. Uh, oh, sorry, it's on the next bullet. I thought it was a couple of slides from now. Um, so the city's maximum statutory rate in this year is two point eight, one, seven, seven, one. And, and yes, the full accounting of digits after decimal, after decimal point are used. And so the actual rate that we are levying in this year is point eighty four, twenty nine. Um, our maximum rate is calculated by starting at three sixty, which per thousand, which is the maximum that can be charged combined for any entity. And that takes the three sixty minus the roughly twenty five cents for the library and the fifty two cents roughly for the fire authority, leaving us the two eighty one. And a few decimal points. And so that is the maximum that we would be able to charge combined. Is that three sixty? And that shows how that all comes together. Any questions on maximum? Yeah.
So thanks, thanks so far. Um, the question I have is, does the three sixty represent the current total rate that we all pay as property owners? Or it, you know, because the way that I'm looking at it, it's almost a zero sum game with the county, right? If you have the three sixty rate subtract off library and fire, then all the other entities presumably make up the balance of that. And so if we were to ask for more of that pie, then would the county get less?
I, I do not believe so, but we will confirm that and, and circle back. The, I believe the three sixty is just the, the internal, the rate between the three, which is the ourselves, is the city. The library stated and the fire districts that we share. It's the three sixty that the county cannot, um, their portion is separate from, from that three sixty. Three sixty is the, um, three dollars and sixty cents is our local that we have reserved for us. Us being again, the city, the fire and the library district.
It's the maximum statutory authority, so. Okay. Um, so what is the process? This is very general, and if you were to go through a levy lid lift, um, there's a lot of detail, but that's what consultants are for. And, um, last time through, Director Bond and I, uh, learned a lot with our consultants and, um, Public Disclosure Commission. Anyway, I'll walk through this. So I mean, step one would be if the council determines it's appropriate to explore levy lid lift with, um, the community. That would be something that council as a whole would direct the administration to go ahead and move forward with. Um, following that, um, motion, then the administration would go out and secure consultant through our normal, normal procurement policy, which would be we put, put, put out a request for proposals. We would pick the most qualified, and then we would negotiate a price for that. After that, the consultant council and administration would engage in the process of, um, working with the residents, um, education, feedback. Basically, what comes out of this discussion with the community is what the idea is, what the money would be used to pay for. And what the value of that would be, what the structure of the levy would be. So how much money, you know, would it increase the levy for how long? Um, you know, is it a permanent levy, which we'll get into, or is it one that renews every six years? Um, and we'll get into those in the future slides. As part of that process, um, there would be a non-bias explanatory statement that the administration and the council would work on with the consultant that would go into the voters pamphlet. And then the council would also need to formally appoint a pro and con committee that each has no more than three members. They would write their statements and those would be included. Um, Director Bond brought up today as well, that then there is the opportunity for a rebuttal, one rebuttal on each side is pretty, pretty limited in scope. Then at some point in the year, kind of is kind of the June, July timeframe when the primaries. That is our deadline by which the council would take action to pass a resolution that would lay out all the details to put the levy on the ballot in November. It's not necessary that it be in November, but, um, you know, in the discussions we had last time, it's when most people are paying attention to the ballot. And I think if you're going to be transparent as a council, you want to do it in the, don't do in February or April. It's just not seen. And then the measure would be put on the November ballot, and it takes a simple majority of fifty plus one to pass. Any questions on that general process? Again, there's, if you get in Reed, there's a lot more detail to it, but we're not talking about any specific levy at this point, so I didn't want to get into a lot of details.
I'm so used to being on the dais, okay. It's something we might consider is, is part of Bullet Three engaging in the residents. Um, about the levy is engaging in a educational process on what, how we collect and how we calculate property taxes in general. Uh, to get to the current levy rate of where we currently are and, um, you know, some, some sort of education about the structural deficit that we see there. I, I know a lot of residents want to understand how that works, but it's really, um, not intuitive. Um, so I would love to see that, even if we don't do a levy lid lift, I'd like to see that educational component be considered. Um, just so that our community is made aware of how their taxes are collected and what it goes towards.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else before I move on? Okay. Next slide. So we're going to go through the, um, types of levy lid lifts. So there is a single year temporary levy. And so what that is, you'll see the first, um, bar that has a green on top of it. So in that first year, you levy some percentage greater than one percent. It could be anywhere from two to, you know, however, many percent council would determine is necessary. And that would be working with the administration and the consultants to do some analysis of how much money that would generate. So you do that one bump, and then for the next, what is that? Four years, um, four or five years, you get one percent on top of that. So your normal one percent. And then at the end of that time, it drops off and you go back to the original tax rate that you had. So it's just, a lot of cities will do this for some financing bond for something, which actually then can kick you out to nine years. But, um, just for this, this is single year temporary. So you only bump above the one percent for that first year. The remaining years are at one percent, and then the whole thing comes off at the end. So it's very, very project specific type of a, of a lift.
So if it lasts, if it's called single year, how come it lasts for five years?
Because it only bumps once in that first year. So the, say that, say in year one, you choose, you'll see it says one time bump exceeds one percent of the annual limit. So in that first year, say you bump it three percent, you know, inflation or four percent. Then that's the base for the remaining years of it, that one percent gets added on to it. So it, you know, be four plus the one percent, and you know, obviously it escalates. And then at the end it drops off. So it's a single year temporary levy bump.
So that's the definition, uh, when they're talking about levy lid lifts, that's the definition of what they define temporary being that five year span. Which you're going to see here in another slide coming up. So their definition of temporary is a short window of which, um, uh, in, when we're, we're discussing lid lifts, that's what it's referring to. And, and I think it will be more clear when we get a couple of slides down to a different type of levy lid left, I think might clarify it too.
Okay, so the next one is a single year permanent lift. And so what this does in year one is you, again, you get that bump over one percent. But then it never resets. From that point, that is now your new talk taxing authority, and you're just adding that one percent. And that takes a vote of the council, remember that, even that one percent takes a vote of the council every year. So I, when we talk about it during the biennial budget, even though you, you're indicating you're going to do that, you have to take action at the mid buy as well to approve that. So this is a single year permanent, and it's just the bump above, above one percent in that first year, and then it, it carries on in perpetuity. I see. Okay, multi-year temporary lift, and this is where things get different, is your initial year can bump greater than one percent. As well as the remaining years can go up to some limit that you set in the levy. And they don't, as it says, I think it says on here, that they don't all have to be the same, um, as you lay that out. But when you're doing your explanatory statement, you're saying in the first year, it's going to be X percent, and that means this much money to the taxpayer. And so you, and it will generate these many dollars in the future years for something like this. In those future years, you only state the percentage you aren't allowed by law to state how much that would raise and what that dollar amount would be to the individual owner. Do you have a comment?
I was just going to say, for example, uh, this is what our neighboring district, uh, the city of Shoreline has done. Um, this is the model that they have taken, um, for one of their O and M operations and maintenance, uh, levy. So this is the one, and the, the model that they use to continue to lift, um, annually is like a C P I. So to use an index that is outside, but driven by, and that index that they use is how they tie, um, some of their, um, how they pay, uh, their, their staff through their union agreements, et cetera. So there's a, there's a correlation, which is then explainable to the community, et cetera. Just to give it a, a real example of, of a levy like this.
And, and not to get too deep in the weeds, but I believe there's reads that it's up to C P I, and then their council makes a decision on how much of that they are going to take. But this is with the single year temporary, at the end of those five years, that drops off. So what Shoreline is up against with that, and some communities have done this for public safety, is that that has to be renewed. If that is not renewed, it has some serious implications to staffing, um, decisions that council may made during those five years. So something to keep in mind. Any questions before I go on to the last of the four? Okay, and then there's the multi-year permanent levy lid lift, which, um, doesn't receive a lot of kudos, um, because it's, it's not well enough defined. It, it gives too much time. It's like, you know, if you have a scope of projects, or if you have like, say Shoreline does with their, their staffing, you know, the way that they told that story to their public was, you know, these are the staffing levels. This is what we serve through those staffing levels. And by having it renew every six years, there's kind of a, kind of a check and balance of, are you still providing the things that you said you would six, you know, five years ago with these dollars? And if it is, and the, the community sees that there's a benefit, then it's likely that it would get renewed in something like this. You know, you get your, um, initial bump of more than one percent, then you get five years of another, however, many percent, whether you set that, that C P I, however that looks. And then it never drops off, that becomes your base, and you're adding one percent to that. And when you project it out twenty years, it can be a substantial dollar amount. And if it's tied to projects, if those projects are done, well, what is the city paying for at that point in time? So that's why that one, um, it has some tangible issues that come along with it. I'll stop there since we rattled through those four really quickly and see.
How much is each one of those worth for the city, just as an estimate?
I can tell you what the twenty twenty one levy looked like. Um, so at that point in time, I think the city's levy rate was just over ninety cents roughly. Um, the proposal was to take it to a dollar fifty seven, which generated approximately two million dollars. Was that a year? I think that was a year. So that's, that's the only example I have. Um, the rest would be very speculative, but that's close enough in our, our past that that's a number that I still have, so.
And I think the question is almost the, the question is the reverse. We are a budget based taxing system, so you don't say, I'm going to increase the taxes as much, how much do I get? You say, we've discovered we need this much more in our budget, and then that's what the levy will look like. So you determine your need, and the levy reflects that.
So thanks for the presentation. It's clarified, clarified a lot of things in my mind. Um, just the one thing that I don't understand is the term. There's sort of this preset five year term for these lifts, uh, especially if they're the temporary sort. Um, but if you wanted it twenty years, could you write that into the proposed legislation?
Do believe that you can term limit it. That rings a bell in the back of my mind, maybe Director Bond.
Um, I, I recall that you can, uh, request, or it would be defined under these categories as a multi-year permanent levy lid lift. But you could have a sunset date, is I believe the term that they used, um, after a certain amount of years that it would. Um, and I, I will have to, if we want to get more detailed, I would have to revisit more than that of what it looked like. Uh, but I recall it being called a sunset date in this particular language.
I still have more slides if, if, you're not done with me yet. Um, so this is just a little bit more of that detail, and we can just go through it quickly. So the single year must state the maximum tax rate imposed in the first year. For instance, it's a dollar fifty per thousand, um, value. Um, if temporary, state the total duration of the levy, number of years. If permanent, state that it's permanent, or that the dollar amount of the levy will be used for the purpose of commuting, computing the limitations of subsequent values. That's a mouthful, I have to go back and read that one in detail. Um, these are written straight out of the R C W. Um, state the exemption for seniors and persons with disabilities under the R C W if the jurisdiction wishes to exempt these individuals. The city, the two times its run levies has exempted those individuals. Um, the purpose, though. Yeah, that, don't need that bullet. Yeah, it's a good idea. Um, the increase in the levy rate, for instance, an increase of twenty per one thousand A V. Oh, sorry, I see it, there's an extra bullet. The purpose also doing is a good idea. State the increase, so it's, it's twenty per thousand. We did this the last time, it's like, you state the increase of the levy per thousand, and you show what that means to homeowners at different values. And that's the tricky thing of what values, you know, you, you have your median value, which is, you know, citywide median, but you have a lot of, you know, commercial and residential values that are quite a bit above that median. So you need to include those in well, as well, and give that simple calculation, um, to your community so they can understand how they need to calculate it as well. I think some jurisdictions in the past was part of their outreach of had a calculator on their website where you could go in and plug in those values. I know that the King County Recorder's Office does it, but going and finding that is, um, not as easy as finding it on our website. So I think that would be something you would want to do. Um, and then stating the maximum total levy amount. You know, this can generate whatever dollars, whether it's three hundred thousand or two million, or whatever that amount is. So I stumbled through that, but, um, there's a lot of detail.
And so those, those don't necessarily need to be on the ballot measure, but we've in the past found them valuable as part of the education, and we can include it on the ballot measures, just not one of the required components. Correct?
No, this says must, these must, this must be included, so we must state the, the minimum tax rate.
Of purpose. It says the ballot measure does not have to stay.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, on those, those below, you're talking about that, just those, yeah.
We, we have included, I think.
We did include those, I mean, it's, it's a best practice.
Okay.
You know, you, otherwise, what are you hiding, right?
Feels like that, doesn't it?
Okay, and I'll try and read this one better. Uh, multi-year lift, um, state the levy duration, number of years. Um, if permanent, you have to state that it's permanent and how things will be computed in the future. That's that, whether it's a set percentage or C P I, whatever that is. Um, the maximum tax rate, if it's a dollar fifty per thousand, ours was a dollar fifty seven. Um, the limit factor to be used for subsequent years, um, the handle, like it says, annual percentage increase or inflation index. And you don't need to include the amounts that be the same year, same every year. And then the, the exemptions for senior and persons with disabilities. Um, and then it cannot, that's where I was getting to, cannot state the maximum levy rate for subsequent years after the first year, because it could change.
How are nonprofits affected by this, nonprofit businesses?
Um, they pay property tax, I believe, just like anybody else. Do they have an exemption?
I, I don't think there is an exemption for nonprofit businesses, because it's based on the, where that, if they had a physical lot parcel. Um, I want to be careful saying building, but probably building, uh, a structure of some type within the city limits, then everybody within the city limits. Um, unless there was an exemption such as the senior citizens or disability pertaining exactly with the qualifications under the R C W as stated. That would be the only exemption, um, in that case. Any other or outside, they would all, uh, have to comply with. The voters will.
Yeah, and I do believe that, um, when you adopt, that you aren't going to charge senior citizens or persons with disabilities. Whatever number that takes off, it's, the rate is adjusted by the county so that you still collect the dollar amount that you thought. So that's something you have to make very clear in the levy is like, you know, by doing this, we anticipate that, that we'll have X effect. And so the, the rate fluctuates slightly to cover for that. Um, and then H B twenty forty four, which goes into effect on June sixth. This is the bill that, um, now allows King County and the cities within, within King Counties to supplant funds that are currently paying for programs or, um, infrastructure. And so if it's your, I guess T I B, I guess you could, you know, well, that's not a good example, because you really can't. I meant to say T B D, you can't really supplant funds. If you're using general fund dollars to pay for something, in the past, a levy could only pay for new things. Um, now it is allowed that it could supplant and pay for something that's already within the general fund, that has a specific cost. Um, thus freeing up general fund dollars to do other things. Um, if you didn't have anything project specific, or like with Shoreline, it was tied to staffing. Questions on that one? Okay. Um, then I, just a couple of links provided, obviously, this is an hyperlink to paper, but, um, you can go to M R S C, and those are the, those are where you would want to go. Um, Matt, when this gets posted online, we make it hyperlink to. Uh, we'll see if that's possible, that might be good for the public. Um, we'll give it a shot. Otherwise, you can just type it in, and you'll get there. More questions? Anything I, question you had coming in, I didn't cover, anything I raised. Obviously, if something else comes to mind, let me know, but, yes, council member.
Yeah, a process question. So early on, you had mentioned that the city appoints the pro and con committees to write the statement. How does that work? Because it seems like it'd be a bit of a conflict for us to appoint the con.
We, we, we didn't appoint, so we reach out, and I can't remember the instrument by which, which I reached out to, um, make a call for a pro and con committee. Um, the con stepped up really fast, um, and they formed themselves. We just have to recognize them and, um, as a by resolution, actually form.
I believe we did have to take formal action to elect to do a pro and con, and then we, I believe, posted it, because that was the method of which we adopted. Was to post it on our website, we sent out notifications as newsflash and tried to get, uh, and then we had a hard deadline of which applications had to be submitted by, um, but it was no more than three on both sides, pro and con. And that is, I believe, there was a, a committee that was, uh, separate, that selected if there was more than, I believe, it's all.
Yeah.
It's all stated in the details.
Yeah, I'd have to go get back the details, but we didn't, did not, yeah, council did not select the pro and the con committee. Yeah. Other questions?
So taking off on the timing idea, then, if, if we wanted to get on the ballot, say, this November, we'd be running a little late, because we're not selecting a consultant or anything like that yet. So I guess, um, is that, I guess it's about a six, five, five, six month lag, uh, between, um, basically getting the consultant and going out to the community and then putting it on the ballot. Is that true for any election? Because of course, uh, um, the county has elections periodically throughout the year. You know, conceivably, there could be, what is it, a, I think it's like a February ballot?
There's a February and an April ballot.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I would recommend general election. Um, I think that's, that's your best where you get the most people involved. You also want to give yourselves as long of a runway with the, the public as well. Uh, I think the last effort was, was way too short. It was, you know, we, I think I was told in early May, go get a consultant. We had him on board by the end of May, and we were running, but that, it's just not enough time to educate. There's so much information, and it's so difficult to understand, even when you, you're involved in it all the time, um, to get that information out. And so I honestly say that, you know, if it was something that the council wanted. You know, if it was something that the council wanted to do, I'd plan on, you know, putting an RFQ out in the summertime, you know. August, September, select, you know, a consultant. To aim for November of the following year. I I really think that that's the the run up that you want to have to do that education. And consultants could, you know, advise on that, but I remember last time they said you'd need a good nine or more months to. To do this type of an effort to take the time to really educate and have those public events and. Not hurry it.
I agree completely. I think the educational portion just did not have enough time to to really get out there and you know, we were trying to do that over the summer when folks were. Thinking of other things and. And, you know, there are, there are August primary. Elections too, but I think the November one is that gets the most attention, obviously, because it's the general election. And if we add, is this true? If we add an election where we didn't already have one, like. An April one for like a special election, that actually adds a cost to the city. Is that correct?
Yeah, if you're the only one that's going to be on the ballot for that month, yeah, you basically bear the the weight of that cost. Otherwise, it's spread amongst others.
So if there's no one to spread it to, we carry the full burden.
Yeah, we I know we looked into that and it was probably a. Fifty thousand dollar hit if you're the only one on the ballot and plus you've got all the other costs on top of it.
So the general is really nice.
Council members, are there any more questions for the city administrator or the city finance director? All right. Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate that.
And if you think of anything, just shoot me an email, but. We'll get it out to you. Thanks a lot.
Okay, so we have one other item and I've asked council members. Goldman and Riddle to lead the discussion on healthy streets.
All right. Yeah, so this is basically, it's an update on where we're at, though I suppose it's new for council members, Good and Saunders. So I'll start. The problem that we're looking to address is feedback from the community. Is they want safer streets and in particular, they want to try to minimize cut through traffic. On streets that were never really designed for cut through traffic. So that's the problem we're trying to address. Something that we did, we look to our neighbor to the south. What Seattle has is they have. A version of healthy streets. There's one in my neck of the woods at one forty-fifth and thirty-seventh where it's basically local traffic. Local traffic, emergency traffic, deliveries. Only which frees the road up. It's much healthier or safer for people to, they want to walk, bike, walk their dogs, play. It's generally a more pleasant environment. So that was our inspiration for us. The previous version that we had brought last year to the council, to the cow. Sort of said, you know, here's some candidate streets that we might want to convert and then, you know, to start things off and then in the future, we could have a public submit applications. And after speaking with Public Works Director Perrigo and Police Chief Harden. We realized that wasn't really the best approach, that there were a lot of nuances to what makes a good or a bad healthy street. And so it wasn't really the best idea. Also, we wanted from the councilmen, fellow council members, they wanted a more bottoms up approach rather than top down. So what we decided on instead was an approach where we would utilize the traffic calming group. So the traffic calming group is sort of a collaboration between Public Works, the Police Department and. Contractor at the transport group, I believe it is. And they basically solicit feedback from the community. And so if members of the public say, hey, this street isn't safe, you know, people are speeding, this intersection is dangerous, something like that. The traffic calming group can then look at it and say, okay, what's the best, you know, is there a problem? Let's collect some data and see the magnitude of the problem. And then if there is a problem, then they can say, well, what's the right solution? Should we put up speed bumps? Should we? Put up one of those speed radar signs? Should we look at maybe putting in like a curb bulb addition to kind of like make traffic weave and slow down? And so they have a number of tools in their tool belt. What we're thinking is we should add a tool to them, that we should give them an additional tool, which is. Converting a street to a healthy street. And that would especially be helpful if, let's say, the street, you know, the cost. It would it would be cost prohibitive to physically re-engineer the road. Or just putting up a radar sign might not be the most effective use of resources. So this way that it would give them the discretion to say, okay, this seems like the kind of road that really should be local access only. And whenever I say local access, I that's short for local access, emergency vehicles, deliveries, guests, all of that. But that should really be the only people using this road on a regular basis. So that is our new plan. And Matt, are you able to put up the resolution? So we, what we have in in coordination with Director Perrigo, Chief Harden, Assistant Attorney Pratt. We have a draft of a resolution that would basically delegate authority to the traffic calming group to create this healthy streets program. And.
And and one of the elements that allows this to be maybe a less expensive, less invasive. Process is it's primarily assigned at the entrance to the neighborhood. And it will local access only, but then it highlights that. That there's dog walkers, there's people on bikes, there's people on, you know, pushing strollers and kind of highlights that this is going to be a more pedestrian. Dense area. And I think we heard a lot of people really enjoyed being able to use the streets during the pandemic when car traffic went way down. And so we wanted to be able to provide a a small neighborhood, the ability to somewhat. Replicate that. The other piece that we're focusing on is the new. Link light rail opening up at the very end of August. So while our primary arterials, we can't do this too, but. We're worried that we're going to see additional cut through traffic through some of these neighborhoods as that volume increases. And so this wants maybe a tool that after. That goes online, people start seeing the impact to their community again and might want to use a tool like this.
Yeah, thank you. And so we could walk through. So the first page is just the where basically setting that what I talked about. Setting the stage that our goal is to improve pedestrian cyclist safety and the like. And then the second page is authorizing the. Authorizing the traffic calming group to actually create this, to design the signs, to figure out, you know, what and and they already have. Also, I should mention they have a. Plan in place where they have. Policy and procedure in place where if enough residents along a street submit a petition. Then that sort of triggers action from the traffic calming group. And so the plan would be to basically have this use that same sort of petition process. Where if a sufficient fraction of residents along a stretch say, hey, we we want, you know, improvements here. That would be what triggers the traffic calming groups authority. So the second page of the resolution basically goes over what the traffic calming group would be doing. Short version is it's adding this to their repertoire that they could create healthy streets. And something that Councilmember Forutani had pointed out is, once this becomes official and once Google Maps and other. Map companies pick this up, that will help a lot because a number of people are just following. This is what the computer is telling me to drive. And so once you just the act of getting that into the map database and putting up the signs. Even if there's no additional enforcement, should still have a substantial impact on on cut through traffic. So that's the second page. The third.
Expand as far as enforcement goes, there's no penalties or enforcement on here. It's really. Relying on people to see the signage and self-select not to go down that street because. They may be noticed, you know, because they'll they'll be an outlier on that street. And again. The mapping programs won't send you there intentionally. So there, we don't have any penalties. We don't have any fines built into the system.
And and so the third page, Councilmember Riddle and I came up with some like a draft of what our imagined guidelines are. I don't believe we'd be looking at the council to adopt these formally. It's really just to make sure that. What the council's intention and staff are on the same page. So sort of saying that, okay, you can't say five twenty-two is a healthy street. Like you can't make major arterials healthy streets. If it's serving commercial businesses, apartment complexes, that doesn't really make sense as a healthy street since. Those are designed to have a lot, lot of traffic. Dead ends cul-de-sacs doesn't really make sense because there there isn't any cut through traffic on a cul-de-sac because you're not getting anywhere. And then also within a neighborhood, if there's a prime, even if it's not officially an arterial. If it's the main way for people to go through. Say, for instance, if you're over by Horizon View and what is it? One ninety-third, I think it is, the the one that's like the north end of Horizon View Park. That's really the only east west street in Northeast Lake Forest Park. So if you made that a healthy street. You'd basically be telling someone, okay, you have to drive up into Briar to get around. It doesn't make sense. So basically, you know, if this is the main conduit, then it should stay a conduit. So any questions about kind of what councilmembers Riddle and I were brainstorming about what would make or disqualify a healthy street?
How about schools accesses to. Elementary schools, you know, if they're, for example. Going up by the Peruvian consulate. There's a school right there. There's several schools right there. So how would that affect?
And.
Areas with schools.
That's a good question. And actually, in that second bullet point, schools are listed there. So commercial, multifamily, schools. So yes, because obviously during, you know, when times when schools get is dropping off, picking up. There's meant to be a fair amount of vehicle traffic for parents to bring in their kids. But again, that's a good point.
And and I think that just highlights those areas where we anticipate accommodating higher traffic and that could help inform us. Into should we put additional pedestrian safety here? Because this is not a road where we can. Naturally lean more pedestrian because because we do have to accommodate the cars. So. It kind of gives us a clue of some some of our areas where we may want to. Put more traditional pedestrian safety improvements in place.
Any other questions about sort of what the two of us? Envisioned this as.
Do you want to show them that?
Yep. And so we each made maps. I was very crude and I did mine on Microsoft Paint and Councilmember Riddle did a much fancier map using actual, you know, better technology. And so there's a map of, it's a color coded map that shows the roads that are excluded from this. And so once that loads. Like all the oranges and yellows, those are the official arterials. So for instance, one seventy-eighth is an arterial, so that's automatically out. So that's, I think, the oranges and. Purples perhaps. And then also purples are, you can see label, there's a lot of cul-de-sacs there. So like those. Roads that go nowhere. And then the greens, those are sort of the primary conduits, I believe. Those are the ones that, you know, if you're trying to get through this, you're trying to get from Horizon View to town center. There's really only one sensible way to do that. And so we don't want to block that road off. So essentially, everything that's colored in on the map is what councilmembers Riddle and I thought would be not eligible as a healthy street. So the streets that are not colored, those are the ones that are potential healthy streets. But of course, this would be up to the discretion of the traffic calming group. Yeah, just it's really just to make sure we're on the same page as to what do we see this as? Uh, Councilmember Riddle, did you want to?
I think you did a fantastic job. I think it doesn't, yeah, the the pale gray streets that you bear, you don't really see on there. That are the neighborhood streets. It doesn't mean they're all eligible. It just means that it didn't meet the other criteria and then those are up to the. Traffic calming group to determine. If the if a healthy street is appropriate for that particular condition based off of the request of the community. And I believe seventy percent of the community has to be in favor of this kind of change on their street in order for that to be able to go through. And that's their current process.
Right. And also echoing something this came up at last week's budget and finance meeting about that, that the council is adopting the policy framework. But we don't really want to be the people to micromanage the details. And so this is bottoms up in the sense that. It's members of the public who are saying, okay, we want our street to be considered. And then it's members of the traffic calming group who actually decide if it meets the criteria in that. Is this the right tool for the job? Or maybe the speed radar sign would be the best tool. Maybe it's making it a healthy street. But essentially, this is the council saying, here's our broad policy. We like the idea of healthy streets. And then leaving it to city staff to actually figure out when and where to implement that. Thanks. Yep. So that's happy to answer any other questions people have. So members.
Would you like to go over next steps? Are we bringing this?
Um, yeah, so next steps, actually, I'm not totally sure. I I think. We we've had a few touches. I think this is our third touch just at cows. If we're if we're counting last year. But I think the next step would be if we're reasonably happy with this would be, I think it would be to have staff and. Kim do a final look over and then bring it to an upcoming meeting, perhaps one of our June. General council meetings.
Thank you, council members. That was a great presentation and I can't, for my part, I can't wait to see one of these streets finally come up and running because. It's been such a success, not just in Seattle, but in other parts of the country as well. And it really does encourage people to get out, meet their neighbors. Use their neighborhoods as places they can exercise and, you know, blow off a little steam. I really like that idea. Just one question I had for either of you two. I love the bottom up process. I love the fact that you're using a pre-existing traffic calming group to actually work with the neighbors on this. What do you envision is going to happen with the petition? Would the petition be from, let's say, let's say seventy percent of the neighbors on a block? And they say something like, we'd like to make this a healthy street. And then once they got to the traffic calming group, there'd be a discussion about. What kind, whether it's logistically possible and other kinds of considerations. And if there was another solution, as Councilmember Goldman suggested, that there would be a negotiation between the neighborhood group and the traffic calming group?
I think, did you have? A better insight into their thinking? Right now, they do have a process for. Get gathering seventy percent approval if they're going to put like speed bumps or the curbed bulbs, anything that's a physical transformation of the street. So we just follow that same process. I'm not as familiar with what that process is. But I know generally speaking, community says, I have a need and then they review.
Yeah, so the last one we did are the chicanes and and improvements south of Brookside there. That was community driven. It was actually back when Chief Sutton was before my time, but. There were a lot of neighborhood meetings. Not everybody was on the same page. It took a lot of iterations, a lot of study before they finally came to. The decision of what the improvements were going to be. There's still candlesticks stuck to the ground and, you know, I think at some point, you know, if it's going to be. Permanent as it seems to be, we probably, you know, in the future, want to address that as a permanent solution. Yeah, it really is the residents reaching out and saying, we have a problem. And then it's always been. The traffic calming group to take that, evaluate that, Brett and the group at Transpo. Look at it from a traffic engineering standpoint of of, you know. The speeds, the movements of the vehicles, you know, collisions, et cetera, to come up with a solution that is proposed. But I can tell you from that example, from what I've heard, you know, it was. Fighting over where the chicanes went because you lose parking and and people didn't want it in front of their house. They wanted them, but you just shift it down a little bit in front of somebody else's house. So. It that's why you want the community involvement. Because it's it's a lot of effort and it does have impacts on the neighborhood and that's why seventy percent is, that's a good solid number.
And and we're hoping that this program would be a lighter touch on the community, being that it's notification at the entrances. Of what is designated the street and the interior doesn't really change. So we're hoping it kind of is an easier option maybe for the traffic calming group for some of these locations.
And I can see if the council approves this, then perhaps, you know. Educationally, the city could put out some notices to the public to sort of reminding them about the existence of the traffic calming group and that. There's a mechanism if members of the public have concerns about their local roads. And including healthy streets on the list of tools that could be an option. Also, I really do want to thank Public Works Director Perrigo and Police Chief Harden because they provided a lot of helpful feedback. We had a few meetings with them. Just sort of fine tuning the process. So they they provided a lot of helpful feedback on on this.
Yeah, and Transport Group. Met us, met both of us once. I will say that we do have to recognize that the the traffic calming group. Requires revenue to. Do their work. And so when they have a heavy lift like doing the chicanes, they put a lot of hours into it. And so this. Is we're hoping that this type of program isn't going to be a burden on the budget, but it is something that we have. Kind of to watch this program to make sure that, one, it's getting the results that we anticipate and two, that it's not becoming a budget burden.
Yeah, and and to that point, you, I think in the. Budget amendment that's, you know, came before you last week will be moving forward. There has been some increase to that line item because of some of the improvements that we've done recently up in the north end of the city. Remember this young man who came and presented. You know, those signs were put in, but that came at a cost to that budget. And so we've got to adjust that budget. So, yeah, there are costs, but, you know. The outcome usually is, is definitely worth the, the cost, so.
Yeah, and I want to echo Administrator Hill's comment on that, which is, I hope we have a problem, right? That this program is so popular that we actually get a lot of neighborhoods very much involved with this and. Love to be able to see a city where it's actually very nice to walk around it. All right. Are there any further comments on, on the healthy streets proposal?
Give you just one more tidbit. I know that the chief is currently gathering data on a lot of the streets that he feels are going to be impacted, one, by maybe our new traffic cameras. And two, from the light rail lines opening up. So he wants to get some baseline data, just, you know, he can only do that in so many places with those signs, but he is collecting that data to hopefully have a baseline. So that. You know, you may see a huge upswing in. In citations on one seventy-eighth and then they drop off. Is that, you know, because they went somewhere else and they're causing a problem? So. Or because they're obeying the law. And so he wants to try and get as much of a baseline as possible. So he's working on that now.
Thank you very much, Administrator Hill. Okay, so I'm wondering if there are any other, actually, we can't, right? There are no other items on the agenda. So just reminding people that there's a regular council meeting on Thursday evening at seven o'clock and this session of the committee at the hall is adjourned.